Good afternoon and welcome to the September meeting of the Marcus for Historic Zoning Commission. Brenda, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Jim Becklin.
Here.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher.
Here.
Rick Cantrell.
Here.
Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mary Mae White. Howard Wilson.
Here. We do have a quorum, so we'll begin. Thank you very much, Brenda. Everyone should have received minutes of the last meeting. Are there any corrections or necessary edits? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Motion may be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion regarding the minutes? If not, then the Chair would welcome, a law vote then, those who are in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, then the minutes are approved as written. Thank you, Brenda. Robert, what is our first bit of business?
Thank you Chairman Thompson. The first item on the agenda is 506 East Main Street. The applicants are George and Mary Mae White. They're requesting to remove two chimneys from the principal structure, which is their house. Ms. White called me in May of this year and explained she was having some problems out of a chimney that had deteriorated so much that they had to have, they had to have it removed. And while I went out there and talked to her about it, I noticed that the chimney had been removed, it'd been covered with roofing material, and it was, it was the best thing to do at the time because of the safety reasons where it was located. So we talked about what would need to be done if they want to pursue removing some more chimneys and possibly replacing the chimney that had been removed. Because any kind of architectural change, any kind of appearance change to the structure would need to come from the Historic Commission. And this being chimneys, which is an architectural feature, I wanted it to come from the Commission. So she, in between May and now, she had talked to some contractors, gotten some estimates for that process, and I left a photo of the, of the house on your, front of your desk with the estimate from one of the contractors, and there was, there was a letter from the Whites explaining their intentions. After receiving the estimate, they decided to pursue going ahead and removing, and I want, if I can be corrected if I'm saying this wrong, I think they went ahead and removed one more chimney, the smaller chimney behind, and there's one remaining chimney out there still. And you can see in their estimates, got a cost estimate for the process to do this. In the East Main Historic Zone Guidelines for Alterations and Demolitions and Removals, one of the, under Section 6 says alterations to existing buildings and property that the original architectural details should not be removed. Mr. and Mrs. White are in the attendance at the meeting, and I'll be able to answer any questions if you have, and they'll be able to answer any also.
Thank you, Robert. George and Mary Mae, would you like to come to the podium and review this with us? Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for having me. These chimneys both came down at the same time, not on the same day, one day after the other. We removed them for safety reasons. Maybe I've learned a little bit more about chimneys since May, but at the time, these things literally had no mortar, they were just held up by gravity. Because some of you may know, everybody and I've lived there probably for twenty-two or three years. Prior to that time, my family lived in that house, actually my grandmother and my father when he was a little boy, and I can't tell you when those chimneys were last worked on, but since 1919, we have had family ownership of that house. When I was a child, in the sixties, we used one of the chimneys, and that is the one that is still standing, that you can best see on the front of the house. We did use that as a coal-burning fireplace. But when my brothers and I grew up and moved off, probably you could say nineteen-seventy or so, I don't ever recall those on any visits back ever being used for anything other than they were just there. The chimneys that were removed, the one in the back that you don't really see, the short one, was in, by the pictures, in very bad shape. It actually, I think, was there, it had no outlet inside of the house, it went to the basement. And at one time, I think we probably had a cold furnace, although I can tell you when my parents moved there in nineteen-fifty-eight, they took out the cold furnace and put in more of a, at least nineteen-fifty-eight modern heating system. No air conditioning, but a heating system. So in looking at this, you know, I would stress that we have a deep appreciation for the neighborhood and certainly value the appearance of our house and the things that go with it. We certainly do not want to replace the chimney that's in the back of the house that no one can see. I was a little bit surprised by the cost of replacing the one that's on Highland Street, and it's strictly ornamental. You know, we have no intention or desire to ever use that chimney again for heating purposes. The other thing is, we sort of need some closure on this because the roof, while temporarily repaired from the removal of these chimneys, is, wasn't done by truly a professional roofer, and of course, we need, need that to be done. So our position at this time would be that we not be required to replace these chimneys because we don't use them anymore, and the reason they came down was for safety reasons.
Does the Commission have any questions of Mr. White?
George, sure your intention is to, to repair the one that's still standing?
Yes, at some time. I'm not, we don't have it on the schedule, if you will, to be repaired, but that one won't come down. It would be repaired.
For clarification, which of the chimneys are, are now gone completely? I'm, I'm looking at the photograph at Silverhead showing Highland Avenue, East Main Street, and there's a chimney that's roughly in the middle of the house toward the Main Street side.
That, that one's still there.
That's still there?
Yes.
There's one that's at the, I guess that would be roughly the west edge of the house close to Highland Street?
That one came down.
That one is gone, and then the one at the rear of the house, facing toward, I guess, the old carriage house, that one's also gone?
That one came down also.
Okay. And you're asking them to leave those two down?
Yes.
But to leave the, the larger, I guess that's probably the larger chimney that's roughly at the front of the house?
Yes.
And, and repair that at some point?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the request was.
There's, there's three total chimneys, two are down, and they're wanting to leave those two down and rebuild the one that still remains. Any additional questions by the Commission?
I had a couple of questions. George, I wondered, I noticed you gave us an estimate from this Reed Masonry and Restoration Company. Have you talked to anybody else if you've gotten a second or third estimate?
I don't have any written estimates. I, it's, I may have mentioned earlier, Mr. Reed, he's got some pretty impressive credentials, and if you look at the pictures of the chimney that came down, its design on that chimney is somewhat like the one that's still standing on the front of the house. And I'm not so sure that, just the regular brick guy can put that back up. It's, you know, it's one thing to have a chimney, if you're gonna put it back up, it's gonna have to look like the one that's there and the one that was taken down. And it's got some, perhaps Mr. Thompson can enlighten us a little, but it's got some particular features to it.
It, it's got some recessed panels and some corbeling within those panels at the top and bottom, and then there's a necking that corbels out slightly, and then the cap corbels out as well, and it's very similar to the larger one that remains. The good thing about the one on Highland is that it's right on the exterior face of the building, it's not inboard. You're gonna have a lot of trouble, I know, repairing the one that's remaining because of the scaffolding that's required, the gardening, the gardens that are down below, the porches that are below. Just simply accessing it's gonna be difficult. In fact, the two that were taken down are probably the easiest to put back of all, of all three. The one that's your, that is left is probably the most difficult, and the largest.
I would think that's true.
I guess my other question was, in seeing who, who you had talked to about this, the one that is on the Highland side of the house that you've already taken down, is there a way to do a facade? You know, not a, not a functioning chimney, but something that, that looks like the chimney to give you some balance there?
I'm, I'm sure there is. I couldn't tell you that it's that less expensive to do that than just to put the chimney back up. Whether or not you, if I understand this right, of course, it's got plywood, it's got shingles, whatever, so the roof is covered. So you would re, you would have to reopen the hole and to support the chimney, whether it's a facade and you leave it open or not, you still have to go below the roof line, you still have to bring it all back up. My impression is that that is not gonna make much difference one way or the other.
Linda, I think you, you would, you'd have to bear on the existing base of that chimney. You'd have to make sure what you take that base down to is structurally sound as well, and then come back up to the roof, so you would still bear on it. You could perhaps do something that is wood in nature and cover it with stucco or something like that, but it's, I have to say, I think the brick, if you were to rebuild it, would be a more permanent solution that would really weather time far better and the, the rain and blowing winds and that kind of thing, getting it, that really putting it back in brick probably would be the best answer. If you're going to rebuild it, I would put it back in red.
I have a question about the, the estimate. I guess the, the sum of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five is to fix the existing chimney and then replace the one that on the Highland Street side that was taken down, is that correct?
No, honestly, I haven't looked at that before I came over here.
I think it's amazing.
Well, it's two figures. One, one figure is for repair and one is for replacement. I don't have it in front of me, I can't tell you which is repair and which is replacement, because we indicated that we really saw no need whatsoever to have the rear chimney replaced.
George, do you think the rear chimney is the one that's the plain chimney at the rear of the house or the Highland?
Very plain, yes, no.
So we don't have a specific price for the Highland chimney?
No, and I believe that is...
Yes.
I think eight thousand two hundred is the Highland.
Okay, so repairing the existing one?
Although it doesn't, it doesn't really...
It indicates the rear, but it's probably the Highland.
Oh, okay.
I would think so, because the other one should be less expensive because of the lack of detail. It was just a plain square.
I think the, this to me, the aspect of this estimate's a little bit backwards. I think pretty, pretty clearly rebuilding the front chimney, he means the Highland chimney, and the Main Street chimney is the second one.
Oh.
Because it's still standing, so rebuilding the Highland one was fourteen thousand one seventy-five and repairing, assuming, he did come out there too long.
Is this Graham, Ray?
Yes, sir.
Graham.
He said that you didn't have immediate plans to repair the existing chimney.
No.
When did you propose to do that?
Well, as Mr. Reed said, you know, that thing has probably been there for like eighty or a hundred years, and it's probably gonna sit like that, and it could fall down tomorrow, but it might not fall down for another eighty years. So...
That's not what I want to hear.
It, it is in a location that it's, if it fell, it would damage the roof, but it's not gonna fall over and hit anybody. The other two chimneys were on the edges of the house, the rear chimney was along our walkway between our house and our garage. If it fell over, it really could hit somebody, and the one on Highland might not hit somebody, but it certainly could damage a vehicle, that sort of thing.
What other questions does the Commission have, the Whites?
This isn't necessarily a question, but I, I think maybe the real sticking point is that we do have guidelines when we're in the Historic District that were, that were developed years ago. And one of those is that original architectural details should not be removed. So I guess it, it brings us back to that, I think we need to have some discussion about that.
Certainly, the chimneys and their decorative nature, I mean, the fact that they're high and tall and skinny provide a vertical element on houses and they're throughout the neighborhood and the district. I asked Mary Mae if I could use your all's unfortunate situation to actually plead to the community who's listening, is that you should inspect your chimneys on a relative basis, perhaps every time you get your roof redone, you should have your chimneys inspected. I've noticed several that have quite a bow to them and a curve, and it's just a matter of time before they, before they fall, and they may indeed hurt somebody. So I, I send out a message to everybody listening that you should inspect your chimneys to make sure that they are in a good condition, because that lime mortar for the Victorian houses is a much softer mortar than the modern Portland-based cement mortar, and it will, water will make it basically, it will dissolve, and it, you will just have a stack of bricks, which is what indeed you had there. And it is a, a real concern for the life's sake of everybody out there who has an historic house of the Victorian era, I would say. But they are indeed, I think, an architectural feature that is something we should, as a Commission, review and discuss on how we deal with these. As we have had one other group that came before us, it was the house, I think it was a rental house next to the Market on Tennessee and East Main, and they wanted to re-roof it with a metal roof, and the Commission at that time, instead of allowing them to take it down below the roof, asked them to bring it above the roof and cap it there for future owners who might then want to build it back up to where it was. That's, to my memory, the only similar case that we've ever had here before the Commission.
There's actually one on the corner of University and East Main. They did some remodeling, did extensive roofing work, and they repaired the two chimneys on that house. And the one you're talking about next to Davis's Market, they repaired that chimney. And I got some photographs if you want to see those.
Sure.
I wanted to add something to clarify. We did not go into this in May to take the chimneys down. I contracted with George's approval, with a, a person who we had used and neighbors had also used for brick repair, for chimneys. And we went through the process of renting the big lift and all that, and it was going on, and it was, it was purely to repair our chimneys. And then they got up there and started just picking the bricks off. And it, it, we've learned a lot. It, it does show you differences in, in contractors and, and their degree of expertise. And it was my fault that I contracted with someone and, and they got up there and I'm on the ground and it's, it came off. So we didn't do it purposely. It was a comedy of errors. And also, Mr. Reed was the contractor who performed the, the brick work on the university and, and, and Main Street chimneys. I got his name from the people who, who he did the work for, and they were really satisfied with him and all. And I've also looked at the chimney next in the house, on the house next to the Market, and there's no comparison in our, our houses. And in fact, that chimney doesn't look like it belongs or anything as it stands, in my opinion, so just add.
Okay.
One observation I have, George and Mary Mae, is the chimney on the Highland side that, that's, that's down, when it was up, it was pretty much camouflaged with your trees. So when you were looking at the front of your house, you, you really just picked up on the one that's still standing versus the one that was in the trees. So I understand Linda's point, and, and, you know, wish we had an opportunity before they came down, but this particular point, because of the camouflage of the trees on Highland, I don't really think it behooves me to suggest that we require to have to rebuild that. Certainly, I would like to see them repair the one that's still standing. And in my own particular property, we had eight similar type chimneys. Well, seven were similar, and one was like your plain one in the back, because that's usually where the boiler went to, and they can be repaired and still standing, so encourage you to, to not wait too long to repair that one that's still standing.
I would agree with what David said. I, I don't see much point in putting the chimney that's been taken down on the Highland Street side back. I regret that it was not maintained so, because it is a decorative element of the house unquestionably, as is the chimney that's still standing. If nothing is done to the chimney that's still standing, then it's gonna come down too. And that's troublesome. I realize that it's a lot of money, but I don't know where the cost of these things is. This Commission's business. We're supposed to look at the standards that were adopted, determine if whatever is there is significant, and make a determination about whether it diminishes the value of the aesthetic value of the property if it comes down. That's, that's my understanding of it. If I'm wrong, tell me. I think that if it were, were it a furnace flue, which is the one on the back probably was, I wouldn't care if it, but this, 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 the one that's on the side that's gone and the one that's there now, both were designed to complement the architecture of the house, and are, are things that I've personally noticed about the house. So I, I think it's a significant element. If we need to, if we need some sort of change to the guidelines that we have to give us authority to make decisions on a hardship basis, economic hardship, then I suppose we could ask that that, that be done. But I'm, so what, if I'm understanding this correctly, and I agree with David, that I don't see the merit in having the one chimney put back up. And then that leaves us with, we're not doing anything here, except saying we're not gonna do that. Because there, if I understand this, you're not asking us to approve rebuilding or reworking the other chimney because you're not gonna do that right now, is that correct?
That would be correct.
So what are we, so what are we doing? Acquiescing in the demolition of the two chimneys that are gone, is that what we're doing?
Probably that's effectively what you're being asked to do, yes.
So what are we gonna do five years from now when the other chimney starts to?
Well, in that circumstance, you would be facing the same question you are today, is should you require them to replace it, reconstruct it, or, or not? And I, I don't find, you know, I, I know there is a, a language in here to the extent of being retained when possible. I don't know if the term reasonably, reasonable is in here. It could be. Those are, of course, value judgments, and, you know, and I, you know, a five thousand dollar repair to someone is, is impossible. Fifty thousand dollar repair to someone is an inconvenience, and I don't know where this stands. But, and, and we, I don't know that this Commission would want to get into the posture of making those kinds of judgments.
Well, I guess the...
If it could, I believe... If it could, I believe, have some reflection of the value of the property. If we're looking at a, just to pick a round number, if we're looking at a $100,000 property and it's gonna cost $150,000 to restore it, that might not make a lot of sense. If it's a $100,000 property and it's gonna cost $5,000 or $10,000 to restore it, that might make a lot of sense. So, and I'm not saying that would be the only, uh, measurement, but it certainly would be something that would, uh, would have a consideration. Again, you know, a $20,000 repair on some houses is an awfully lot of money, and a $20,000 repair on some other houses is, is not that much.
I guess just my concern is, I see these as architectural features, and I understand the dilemma that you're in. I do. But I would also, if, based on our decision today, may also promote people just go ahead and take their chimneys down instead of repairing them?
Or to let them deteriorate.
Yeah. And that's a concern, because I think they are architectural features. To have a building with no chimneys is very stripped in my mind and-
And I would also point out that in one of the, at least one of the pictures of the Highland chimney, it's very visible. It's apparently, in the wintertime, there's not a great deal of foliage. In one of the photographs of the Highland chimney, it's completely not visible. I suspect that those trees were either not yet planted or were very small at the time that chimney was built. And if it's maintained, that chimney will probably still be there when the next small tree is planted. So the fact that at part of the year, it's blocked by this foliage, I would suggest is certainly a consideration, but I'm not sure that should be the only consideration when, when a good part of the year it is gonna be visible. Quite visible from, and very, fairly obvious that there's a, obviously, I guess, in my lay opinion, that there's a chimney race on the side of the house with nothing that completes it.
This seems to be a problem, though, not only with chimneys, but with all types of elements on historical structures. And as far as the commission, you know, we maybe talked about inclusion of these things in deterioration, just neglecting, I'm not talking about George's house, but I'm talking about houses throughout the district. Was this commission's, have we waded into that as a whole to start looking at everything that might be deteriorating in the district?
Well, arguably, the White's House is one of the best maintained houses on East Main. I mean-
Certainly one of the most attractive.
It's, it's-
It's a beautiful home.
It's an amazing house. What y'all do to maintain, it's just, it sets the bar very high. But I hear what you're saying, and it's deferred maintenance, which it's, I mean, that roof probably has a 12 over 12 pitch, and it's very, very steep, and to get up there is quite the chore, not a safety hazard. And it's understandable why they haven't been inspected, but it's one more argument, like you say, Howard, that the loss of these features is just whittling away against the architectural fabric, and it's a concern for me.
And to some extent, this commission may not as much, but, you know, city codes, if there are eaves that are crumbling, if there are porch railings that have, and a required railing, but it's rotten and wobbly, this commission may not itself go investigate, but there, if it's discovered, there will be a property maintenance inspection and order from Building Codes Department. And then when they need to repair that, they would, they should be coming in here to get the style and everything approved. You know, porch boards, they're easy to see. The roof overhang eve, that's pretty easy to see. When those start rotting and falling down, everyone notices that. The chimney on a house of this nature, it's not quite as obvious, and so it's not gonna be a codes inspector or even a neighbor calling and saying, hey, this porch is falling in, take a look at it, and-
So the Codes Department's not gonna make somebody put a chimney back? They're gonna make you get it to a condition where-
No, but if, if someone were to, and I'm not sure that Monty Kapavick wants me to send him up to this roof to make an inspection on this chimney. But if they were to look at it, even from, and I don't know if you can tell it from ground level, but if you looked at that from ground level and said, wow, there's a problem. No, the Codes Department wouldn't make them replace it if it's not being used, if it's not functioning as a fireplace or as a chimney. But the Codes Department could tell them to either fix it or replace it or repair it or, you know, do whatever, remove it. And then that next step would, should bring them then to this commission.
Mr. Reed had a very handy spyglass that he used from the ground to zero in on the chimney that's standing.
He had a what, George?
Spyglass.
Oh.
So, George, Mr. Reed's the one that took the chimneys down?
No.
Oh, okay. And that was another contractor?
That was another contractor.
Who led you all to believe that they were just not worth repairing?
Yes.
Well, he also brought up that the base was kept crumbling as he kept going down, too, as I remember part of the discussion, Mary May.
And that's a problem. These things go all the way to the ground, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
But it's, but again, it's lime-based mortar that does not last forever. It must be maintained, and the extreme exposure on the roof, it's getting a lot of water and it's dissolving. And so, as the water runs down the chimneys, it's gonna go, in many cases, below into the roof structure itself, and it may be not stable below the roof as well. That's what we were told by that gentleman who was taking them down.
Well, clearly, this, this house is, without a doubt, one of the premier houses on East Main Street. It, I think, has much or more than most, because of the way that the yard and the landscape and the porch, everything is kept, gives you a real sense of time and place. And I think that's why I've looked at it so much as I've gone by. And I am, I'm not, I'm not disposed to want to ask the Whites to rebuild these chimneys. I don't think, I'm more concerned about the other one, but that perhaps we can get our heads together, come up with a contractor too who's experienced in these, that is like a lot of other contractors right now, very short of work, who might be interested in taking a look at it, but I'm-
I'm certainly not meaning to suggest that the commission should do that. I merely want to point out a couple of options and alternative ways to look at it. But I think the commission is certainly within its jurisdiction to say that replacing the Highland chimney is or is not a reasonable request to make of owners in these circumstances. And quite frankly, I think either decision would be supported. And I think that's, you look at the entirety of the house, and certainly, it's still a nice house.
Oh, absolutely.
The fact that the Highland chimney is no longer there, uh, certainly, you know, may distract to some extent from the historical and the design and the architecture and the, but it's still a very nice home and a beautiful contributing structure to the, to the historic district and will continue to be.
I feel a little like a schoolteacher picking on her A-plus student here.
Right. Unfortunately, yes.
And you're taking much-
Is there any further discussion?
Only to say that my feelings are, are cynical to Paul's, that I think, based on the fact that there was a safety concern, if they had a contractor telling them, they really were concerned about the base of this chimney, that I don't see the sense in making the points, put the chimneys back. I'd encourage them to look at a way to salvage this chimney that's there, so we don't have the same problem arise in the future.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one last thing on my point. George and Mary May, when you do restore this remaining chimney, I would encourage you to put a cap on the top so that the water can't directly get back into it, which will help extend life of it.
If there's no further discussion, the chair would welcome a motion regarding the proposal. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Make sure that this is clear, that you are moving to approve the applicant's proposal that they not be required to replace the Highland chimney and the chimneys that was at the rear of the house. Is that-
I read the agenda item as approval to remove the chimneys, but obviously, it's been done, so.
Okay, they're both, and to not require replacement of those two chimneys.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're-
Yes, thank you.
We're seeing it all on the way we all agree, but we're stuck voting, right?
With that clarification, all those in favor of the motion to not rebuild the two chimneys, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion's in. Thank you very much. Robert, is there anything else?
Yes, sir. Last month's meeting, I know, Planny Drucker came and gave a presentation on the Historic Commission and where we're headed and where we're going. I have since talked to Van West. He regrets that he couldn't make the meeting today. He wants to attend because he's, he's kind of interested in helping out the commission on their pursuits. He won't be able to attend October's meeting either, but he did say he would attend November's meeting. He's already got it pinned in on his calendar. He'll be in Washington, D.C. next month, and he's out of town today. But he is interested in coming along and helping the commission do whatever we're gonna be doing.
Right. We thank you for that. Is there anything else, Robert?
Uh, the calendar. I have a draft calendar, and I think each one of you have it up there with you. We're just proposing this as the meeting dates for next year, 2011. And if you approve of the dates in the, on the calendars, just, I would like to have a motion and approval for that.
The chair would then welcome a motion to accept the calendar as prepared.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor accepting the calendar as prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Robert. We have an approved calendar.
Great. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the previous issue now that we've got the Whites off the hook here, and talk about this, what we, what, I guess I'm asking for some history, Robert. Maybe you can do this for us. Does the Historical Zoning Commission have a lot of precedence in its history for looking at situations and making a decision based on the cost relative to the benefit?
No. I don't know that any or many have come up since I've been here, and going through the minutes of the meetings that I've looked through since 1986, I can't recall hardly any.
And I agree with Jim's concern about setting precedence that could undermine what it is that we're doing. If we require something like this, let's say we had voted in favor of having those chimneys put back, under the ordinance that we have, and I don't, I just don't recall this, and David, I'm hoping you'll know, what is the source of appeal that an applicant would have? Is it BZA or?
No, it's the courts.
It'd be the court.
Is there an appeal to seek help?
No.
If you can't appeal it, I remember it was in the guidelines, I don't remember what it said you could do, but you could appeal it.
I'm not sure which court it is.
It would be, okay, that was, well, most zoning issues, that's the remedy is-
It would either be the circuit court or chance court, and they're substantially equivalent, but-
Okay.
Right. Here in our county, they're not in all counties.
Okay. I didn't know whether there was a method where we, where the Historic Zoning Commission could make a ruling based on the guidelines. A, is it contributing and be, can it be repaired without getting into cost benefit? Because I don't, I can tell you that there's nothing that can't be done on historic buildings. I mean, they can be picked up and moved. You can do anything. It ultimately boils down to how much is it gonna cost to do it. And I'd hate for us to, I don't think it's good for this commission to have to address the merits of what something is costing. It's either, either we address by the guideline and say yes or no according to the guideline, and not be up here trying to decide whether or not it financially makes sense to do it. It depends on who you are, I suppose. That question's so relative.
How historically, though, what has the commission done with identifying contributing structures that are deteriorating and doing something about it? And what?
I don't, I don't believe we have.
Have we ever gone out and found a contributing structure that's deteriorating and said, you're gonna do something about this?
Building and Codes Department has, on occasion, cited somebody for deterioration and sent them notice to, that they would have to make repairs up to standards, International Building Code.
As a result of Historic Zoning Commission or committees?
No, this is what they found.
Okay, but nothing from us?
No.
The enabler-
They found it, and then it may have come before us to suggest that the repairs were appropriate.
Okay, but we don't have a mechanism to go looking for this, for a problem.
I think the state enabling authority for historic zoning provides for the possibility of willful neglect as being incorporated. In other words, we're enabled to do that, or city or county is enabled to do that. In my experience, very few communities actually put that, they get so much political resistance to a commission having that kind of authority that it's not done, and I know it's not in our ordinance. But that's what we're talking about.
Right. There is a section here in our Rules of Procedure. It's Roman numeral seven, on page six of Rules of Procedure, talks about economic hardship. But that appears to be in relationship to an order for removal, or approving removal or demolition. And it would appear, and this is a kind of a quick reading, but when someone comes in and says, I don't wanna fix up my house because I wanna tear it down and build a 12-year apartment complex.
Right.
And the commission can look at economic hardship to that person, kind of the flipside of this, by not making them fix up the house. You know, has it reached the point that fixing the house makes no sense, not because of the cost of the house, but because they could convert it to an apartment complex much easier? So, now, that's just a quick look at this, and that appears to be what this section is related to. I can't really speak to the, and I do know that demolition by neglect is certainly something that could happen. I think normally you're looking at a whole structure or an area rather than an element. And it's something that I know of some cities, and I'm not sure that any in Tennessee have ever, I don't know if there's cases here, but there are cases in the country where were structures and even areas that intentionally have been let go so that they could then demolish it to replace it with whatever, a shopping center or automobile plant or whatever they had in mind. And there's been, I can't say which way those decisions have gone, and I would suspect that like a lot of others, there's probably some going both ways. But it's, that's obviously a very difficult area for a commission like this to get into.
Well, yeah, I just, let's be clear, though. If something is refilled because of demolition or because of fire, we as a commission have the authority to ensure that it's rebuilt in a st-
the authority to ensure that it's rebuilt in a style and nature of the homes that are surrounding it.
Right.
And not a 12-unit apartment house that way.
Right.
That way at all. I just wanna make sure.
Well, to an extent, because when the person would say, okay, look, the fires destroyed my, my home, and I wanna replace it with something else, and the commission is, I think, required to consider the owner's claim of economic hardship by not being allowed to do something different. I don't think, I think you have the power to not let him do something different, but under our rules of procedure, that would at least have to be, have to be considered. And same if it's, you know, an accidental fire or whether it's still there, but he says, I wanna tear this down and replace it. You are, I believe, from this, required to at least listen to that owner's claims that not allowing him to replace it with something different is, is going to be an economic hardship for him. I don't know that you have, I don't think there's anything there that tells you how you make that decision, but that is an element that they will be able to ask you to consider.
Well, on a smaller scale, on deterioration, I mean, we as the commission, as we're traveling through our zone, and we see something that's deteriorating, whether it be a fence or a chimney of great degree, and we have the ability to have Robert check it out and present that to the city and see if we can do something about it. And in one case I remember is that, that fence that was falling down at the 600 block. And so they, they decided just to tear it down, which is fine, because the, I mean, it really didn't contribute to anything anyways.
But, but if it had, would we have the authority to make them build that fence back?
I believe, yes.
I would agree, yes, also.
And we're considering economic hardship.
Right. And they could claim that it's economic hardship, but that, just because they claim that, doesn't mean that that's what you would find. Again, I think it would be a weighing of all the circumstances.
It seems maybe instead of going on about this, we should go back to the minutes that remind us from last week that we were, we were talking about having a subcommittee to get us all organized about the Historic Zoning Commission and doing a self-analysis for guidelines and procedures. And if they're meeting current requirements, I'm reading this from the minutes, and I wonder if that, if that's been scheduled.
It has not been scheduled. We need to, we have asked Paul Cross, and I think, David, you also agree to be on that committee, and we need to meet and to review the procedures that we have and go over that. So we need to schedule that. You're on.
Because I think in answer to your question, Howard, once we get that, once that's been reviewed by our experts on this, on this commission, then we can all be informed and know what we should be doing.
We may need to look at it.
I just, it's not.
So we need an attorney on that subject.
We may indeed need an attorney at some point to assist us with that, yes.
I know of a good one.
Oh, yeah. Is there any further business before the commission today? If not, the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, and thank you very much.